The September 17th, 2019, City and Town Council Meeting for the Town of Corder Madera is now in session. Rebecca, would you please call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Kuhnheart.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Vazia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bethman.
Here.
Mayor Andrews.
Here. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There he is. Is it because of the presentation that fired? Or is this LED lights, maybe?
Okay.
I don't know.
The first item is open time, where citizens are permitted to speak on any topic for three minutes unless it is otherwise specified on the agenda. So, any of you who want to raise an issue, go ahead.
Just an announcement. Age-friendly Corder Madera's third Wednesday is tomorrow with a very important topic on avoiding falls. It's something that leads to serious consequences for older people. So, 11 o'clock at the Community Center, please come and tell all of your friends and neighbors to come and learn how not to fall.
My name is Jeannie Asdory and I live at 28 Tamil Vista Boulevard. I'm here tonight to talk about the Amazon Initiative. This initiative asks Amazon to run Pilot Pickup Program in Marin County, in which delivery trucks pick up Amazon boxes and plastic mailers on subsequent visits and take them back to Amazon warehouses for reuse. Many Corder Madera residents have signed the Amazon to Reuse Boxes petition. Throughout Marin, more than 6,000 residents have signed the petition. The cities and towns of Belvedere, Larkspur, Fairfax, Mill Valley, San Rafael, and Muir Beach have already endorsed the initiative. We'd like Corder Madera to join the effort. In our climate action plan, the Town of Corder Madera has committed to the reduction of waste through reuse and recycling. The reuse of cardboard boxes is key to this commitment. Reuse eliminates the need to remanufacture boxes. It conserves natural resources, timber and water, and causes no pollution. The goal of the Amazon to Reuse Boxes initiative is to move away from single-use products, slow down the volume of cardboard and plastic being discarded, and control our refuse bills. We ask the Corder Madera Town Council to support the Amazon initiative. Your support on behalf of the residents of Corder Madera will, one, elevate the issue inside Amazon, and, two, paired with other innovative reuse programs, move the city towards its ultimate goal of zero waste. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Nolik. I live in 160 Summit Drive. I come here to talk about the, I would like to be treated fairly and want justice, because my house, we got a letter from fire department to ask us to cut down everything, to remove all the dead leaves and all the branches, everything. And we have been working on that for almost a month, which is impossible to do it. And I've been talking to other neighbors, and I drive around the road, I see a lot of houses that have trees all over the roof. Everything is there, but no one asked to be cut, only my house. And I feel like I got picked on it. And I want to ask why they do that to me, and I want to know why other people don't get that letter. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could I, Ms., could you just repeat your address, please?
160 Summit Drive.
I'm sorry, 1 what?
160.
Got it.
160. Thank you.
Bob Bundy, Golden Heine Passage. I'm here to remind everybody in the audience this evening and at home and on the dais up here that California Coastal Cleanup is this Saturday. This is sponsored in Corder Madera by the Corder Madera Community Foundation, Practical Martial Arts, the Lions Club of Corder Madera, and Boy Scout Troop 27. So, we're asking everybody that would like to come out, join us Saturday morning at 9 o'clock. Parking is in the Macy's parking lot. Walk across the street, we'll have tents set up at sort of the south end of the shorebird marsh channel, and we'll have maps to send people out to pick up trash throughout the Corder Madera wetlands. If you have five-gallon buckets, bring those. Wear work clothes, bring gloves. They will be provided. If you don't have those, community service credits are available. I look forward to seeing everybody out Saturday morning, and we'll do our best to clean up the Corder Madera marshes and wetlands. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jim Gosell. I'm a 28-year resident of Corder Madera. This is only my second Town Hall meeting I've ever gone to. The first one was about the parking for Redwood High School, so it seems like I'm on a roll here. This one is, concerns the High Canal Project, okay? I don't know, I'm here, number one, to, I want to be on record as saying I'm worried about damage that may be done to my property based on the amount of water that has been pumped out behind my house. I don't know if you, any of you have been up there to see what's been going on, but they've been pumping for 12 days, 250 gallons a minute, 24/7. They just stopped today. There's a nice fellow from Town Hall, Dave Marquette, came up, and, very nice fellow, he should be the spokesman for Corder Madera. Anyways, we walked around. At that rate, that's 3.6 million gallons over 10 days. Okay? The whole back of, beyond my fence is flooded, okay? The ground is saturated. I don't know where their water's going. I don't know why they chose to put it there. I did have a brief conversation with RJ. He had a run this morning, and he said, you know, basically, "I gotta run, you know, I'll have somebody call you." And that was Dave who came out. So anyways, I asked RJ, "Why didn't they just extend the piping and put it in north of the Larkspur path behind Redwood High School, where there's a lagoon that's in Larkspur? Why didn't they pump the water in there?" He told me it was an environmental concern. Okay. All right, so I believe him, whatever. Okay. If you go down Birch Avenue, and Eli, you're probably familiar with this, there's a pump station that pumps from the lagoon into the canal, okay? And there's a right-of-way between like 65 and 69 and 66 Birch Avenue, where you could have run a pipe from that into the lagoon, instead of pumping out into my backyard. We walked down, we talked to whoever, the PR guy from the construction company, and he said they didn't have the permit for that. I don't know what that involves, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know much about state permits, all this kind of stuff, but all I know is that, you know, at first they told me, "Well, it was environmental concern like that." Then I said, "Well, they pump the water from that canal into that lagoon and back. It goes both ways," if you're familiar with it.
Yeah.
So, it's the same water that was being pumped behind my house. Why didn't they think of that? I got no notice that they were gonna, you know, pump where they did. There were a few other options they could have done. They could have pumped through that right-of-way and into a sewer. And I assume there's some reason why they can't pump into the sewer. They also could have pumped down the other direction in the canal and pumped into the other lagoon. But instead, they didn't give anybody any notice that lived there, they just started pumping. And I figured, okay, for two or three days, whatever, I can live with it. Then when it kept on going and going and the water kept rising, I was like, you know, this is really an issue. Then Town Hall's closed on Friday, it closed on Saturday, it closed on Sunday. I called RJ on Monday, left a voicemail. Apparently, he was out. I called this morning at 8:31. I called him, had a brief conversation, that's when he said, "I gotta run, I'll have somebody call you." My concern is, where'd that water go? You know, I don't want to wake up one morning and find out I have a huge sinkhole in my backyard, or something worse. I don't know what the complications are from the water, and I'm concerned that, you know, I didn't get a straight answer from anyone. The PR guy from the construction company, when we asked him how much he was pumping out, he told me 10 gallons a minute. Okay. I used to live on Golden Heine. Golden Heine, I went to Goodman's, got a little sump pump. It pumps 21 gallons a minute through a half gallon, through a half-inch hose.
Mine's up.
All right, so you're enlightened.
Mr. Gosell, could you give us your address on Birch, please?
97 Birch.
Thank you.
It's down there in the corner of Corder Madera that nobody cares about.
Wow. Okay. Hello. Wade Winblad, 160 Summit Drive, 510-586-6112. And I am a criminal. Yes, you have a criminal in your neighborhood. That's me. I have eight violations with the city. I was just at home, working up, saving money to pay my property taxes, and then the fire department came up and said, "I've gotta do a massive amount of yard destruction," which, you know, if I was given more time, I was given like 27 days to do about, I've done about on the fifth van load that I've taken over to the dump. I remember a time when marijuana was illegal and bamboo was legal, and now the rules have changed on me. The fire marshal drove up to my house and looked around, and he had to pass about 200 feet of street frontage of bamboo, just like I was being cited for. He told me that my house was, quote, "on the radar." I don't know what that means exactly, but it sounds like I'm being singled out for some reason. My yard used to be shady and cool and verdant, and I used to love my yard. Now it's hot and dry, and the sun bakes down when it's warm. It's a horrible place to be now. You know, this letter here I was given, it says, "Remove all dead vegetation located on the property." Well, I raked my yard down to the dirt. Then I went out to lunch, and when I came back, dead vegetation, leaves. This is impossible. There is no way in the world that this can be cleaned. All dead vegetation, that's not gonna happen. The same thing with all dead vegetation from the trees located on the property. I've got like 100-foot redwood trees. Am I supposed to shimmy up those every season? I think these requests are unreasonable. Now, bamboo along the roadway, if we all decided that's gotta go, that's fine, but I'm given 27 days to do all these tasks. Now, you know, being a criminal like me, I might be subject to asset forfeiture. That's what's used when people are violators. Is that it? Or is that the phone?
That's your number.
Thank you. The next item is the presentation, Marin Wildfire Prevention and Mitigation Initiative.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing us to spend some time with you this evening to brief you on the progress that is being made toward the development of a comprehensive county-wide wildfire prevention and mitigation initiative. I know that you are all aware that this work has been underway, so tonight, we'd like to give you a brief status check on where the project is currently, and hopefully provide you with enough background and detail concerning the project, so that you will be able to provide any feedback and direction as the remaining pieces of the initiative are solidified and potentially brought before the voters next March. Joining me tonight to present the latest information regarding this initiative is Marin County Fire Chief Jason Weber and Navado Fire Chief Bill Tyler, who is also the president of the Marin County Fire Chiefs Association. Both Chief Weber and Chief Tyler represent the fire chiefs in the committee work that is being done with the City and Town Managers Group to develop this concept and refine the approach. Also joining us tonight is Battalion Chief Kristi Neal from the Marin County Fire Department. Chief Neal is responsible for the Fuels and Vegetation Management Program for the Marin County Fire Department, and has served as a key subject matter expert during the development of the proposed initiative. And finally, we have our own Fire Marshal Ruben Martin from Central Marin Fire. Chief Martin has served multiple terms as President of the Marin County Fire Preventions Officers, and is very familiar with the unique challenges that we face here in Marin with regard to vegetation management and fire prevention issues. I mentioned the unique challenges of Marin, not because our trees and grass and bamboo grow differently than in other areas of the state, but because here in Marin, we have such a large proportion of our population either working or residing near high-fire-hazard areas. And at the same time, we have so many separate and distinct agencies attempting to address the issue of prevention and mitigation individually within their jurisdiction. And that's what makes Marin so unique. We certainly do have some good examples of creative partnering between agencies to accomplish projects of mutual benefit, but in general, no single agency in this county is funded, equipped, or prepared to implement the type of comprehensive and sustained improvements to preparedness and resilience that are proposed by this plan. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Bill Tyler, who, you'll be going first, right, Bill? Who will be giving you an update on where we are.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Andrews, City Councilmembers, thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you tonight. We, to kick off this presentation, we have a short video that we'd like you to watch, and then we'll get into the presentation.
Wildfires are bigger, burn longer, cause more damage, and kill more people than ever before. During the fire siege of 2017, when our friends to the north experienced that disaster, Marin was just one ignition source away from that occurring. We have the same fuel conditions, same weather, and same topography that drove that fire that night.
Wildfire risk is now a constant threat in Marin, especially in communities like Marin with lush vegetation, development near significant areas of natural open space. Marin's natural beauty and undeveloped lands are considered sole school for potentially devastating and fatal wildfires, similar to the ones that have ravaged Santa Rosa, Napa, Lake Counties, and Paradise over the past few years. Many Marin neighborhoods are adjacent to wildfires because of the strong desire to live close to nature. Recent fire seasons have been longer, hotter, and among the deadliest and most destructive on record. The 260,000 residents of Marin receive fire protection and emergency response services from 19 separate cities and towns, fire districts, and the county, but there is no single agency responsible for coordinating wildfire prevention.
The threat of large destructive wildfires in Marin is real, and one of the most important lessons is that a fast-moving wildfire doesn't care about jurisdictional boundaries, but a coordinated, large-scale effort to improve prevention and safety can make a difference, can save lives and property.
Unresponsive, a coordinated action to reduce wildfire risk in Marin. Local fire agencies and municipal departments have proposed creation of a new joint powers authority in Marin wildfire prevention authority. The new authority's mission would be to improve and oversee programs in wildfire detection, improve alert and warning systems, rescue evacuations, vegetation management, and fire hazard reduction, defensible space property evaluations, educating the public about wildfire safety and wildfire prevention.
This new fire prevention and mitigation program is designed to be in addition to, not in replacement, of the current fire prevention efforts currently in place in our area communities. The program is designed to bring all of Marin neighborhoods up to a defensible space standard to minimize loss from large damaging wildfires, while also allowing flexibility to address local needs. For example, some communities have local fire issues related to the need for improved fire patrols, road widening, increasing the vegetation removal along critical evacuation routes.
Some local community issues that can be addressed, for one, is improving your primary and secondary evacuation routes from your neighborhood. Many communities within Marin only have one way in and one way out. How we improve that is by removing hazardous vegetation that's located below the roadside. A second issue to address would be a new defensible space inspection program. How that is evolved is by allowing a cadre of inspectors to come into our community and to be able to consistently inspect every single property and give recommendations on how you can prepare your home to become an wildfire center.
No dedicated source of funding exists for wildfire prevention and preparedness in Marin. Options for securing a dedicated funding source are being evaluated, including placing a level of funding given to the county for voters to consider. It is estimated that approximately 20 million of our seniors need to be able to implement an effective coordinated wildfire prevention program.
We've been lucky to avoid major wildfires right now. The luck is not a strategy. We need a good plan to make ourselves safer. Research and just plain common sense point out the need for a coordinated county-wide wildfire prevention effort. It's been a long time coming, but I'm very excited to see all this come together.
In the coming months, all cities, towns, and local fire agencies will have the opportunity to contribute to Marin wildfire prevention authority, and decisions will be made about securing and dedicating funding for the authority's programs. To save the world, please visit www.marinwildfire.org.
So, what's really brought us here to speak with you tonight is looking back on the fire seasons of 2017 and 2018. Those were the deadliest, most destructive wildfire seasons on record. We know that wildfire knows no boundaries. Fire seasons are longer also due to climate change, about 84 days since the 1970s. They're more destructive, killing more people, both the public and firefighters. You need only to look outside to see all of the lush vegetation that we have that's intermixed with homes, and we have the same sort of vegetation that can support those high-intensity, fast-moving fires that we saw in Santa Rosa and up in Paradise. We have a very strong system of mutual aid between fire agencies. That means seamlessly responding to emergencies, to cover for each other, to get enough resources to battle a fire. But with regards to the pre-fire work and the prevention demands, those are exceeding the capacity to be able to respond to a level that's needed, really, for fire education, for prevention, inspection, and also consulting. And we think, due to the climate change, that the problem is likely to get worse in the future. This is an image that was taken from the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. It basically shows a very hot, dry day in Marin County, and the colors that you see are tied to flame lengths from vegetation, the topography, wind, slope, et cetera. What's significant here is that you can see on a very warm summer day, high temperatures, low humidities, that there's a lot of red on that map. In fact, over half of the map. We anticipate flame lengths larger than 11 feet. And why that's significant is that we can't put firefighters directly in between the flames and things that they're protecting at that range. You need aircraft, you need heavy machinery, bulldozers, et cetera. I don't know if you knew this recently, but there were two fires up in Navado, both required over the last week, that required aircraft and other heavy equipment to get the fire Insurance losses are also on the rise. Those are increasing across California. Residents are losing their insurance, and this is partly in to the fires that we've had. Non-renewals are up by 6% in California. We know from studying the 2017 Tubbs Fire in Santa Rosa, that 74% of those homeowners that lost their homes were underinsured. Right now, it's about $500 per square foot is what they need to rebuild. In Marin County, it's likely to be much larger than that, so one of the take homes is for people to go and take a look at their insurance policies and make sure that they have adequate coverage. There's really three documents that are the pillars to the initiatives that we're bringing forward. The first is the 2016 Community Wildfire Protection Plan. This was a science-based document where all of the stakeholders, fire agencies, law, landowners came together, and we studied the risks and hazards here in Marin County. I came up with a list of recommendations and goals for the fire agencies to pursue, and annually, fire agencies report out on all of their areas of concern and the projects that they've completed. And that information is also available on the website. We also use the Lessons Learned Report. This was from the 2017 fire commissioned by the Board of Supervisors. And very shortly after that fire, we asked all of those emergency responders, again, law enforcement, Office of Emergency Services, land management agencies, to come, and really before they had even debriefed amongst their agencies, we asked them, you know, what happened, how, what did you have in place ahead of time, what did you wish you would have had in place? And then we stepped back and looked at what we had here in Marin County, and we did a gap analysis. From that gap analysis, we identified for the fire agencies 24 initiatives that we needed to try and address to close those gaps. The last document is the Marin Civil Grand Jury Report. This was an outside audit that was done, and review, interviews, analysis, and their findings suggest that there needs to be a new way to approach prevention and mitigation. They recommended a JPA be formed, and they recommended a funding mechanism of a sales tax be put in place to help fund that. So, just a little bit about the JPA that we're proposing. So, this is the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. It's a combination of local fire agencies and emergency service providers, along with cities, towns, and the Marin County. And what we're proposing is to work together to form that single joint powers authority, so that we can have a comprehensive wildfire prevention program. So, I mentioned to you those 24 different items that were identified in the Lessons Learned Report. As the President of the Marin County Fire Chiefs, we put together a committee to be able to look at those 24 items, and we distilled them down to six initiatives that we thought that would meet the concerns identified in those reports. Those six initiatives are identified here. The first four make up what we are calling the JPA Core. They are wildfire detection and evacuation program improvements. And by the way, detection and evacuation is the number-one concern of the public. When polled and surveyed, amongst everything else, they want to know how they're gonna know about that there's a fire, and how are they gonna get out? Vegetation management and fire hazard reduction, also grants, and public education. Those four initiatives make up what are 60% of the JPA. Then there is an allowance for some local control around defensible space evaluations, and also taking a look at home hardening, or trying to reduce the structural ignitability. There's an opportunity here for a local agency to be able to perform these sorts of evaluations, or they can go along with a cadre of inspectors that would be brought in for uniform inspections across the county. That's 20%. And then lastly, an opportunity for locals to identify their own prevention and mitigation issues that they can manage. And I want to go into a little more detail on each of these now. The first has to do with the detection and notification. We think there needs to be a study-wide, excuse me, a countywide study on evacuations, so that we can definitively understand trying to move a large number of people from each one of the towns and cities. That'll help us further identify the choke points, and we can begin to put measures in place to try and address those concerns. We also want to take advantage of new technologies that are out there for notifications. We've got additional mountaintop cameras that help with early detection, and they can help us determine how large a fire is, and whether it's spreading or not, and help us find the location. location. We also were talking about using hazard radios that are similar to the weather radios that you have in the Midwest when there's tornadoes, et cetera, that could be turned on during red flag conditions that homeowners could have inside their homes where a message could be delivered directly to them using a radio. We want to practice and drill on evacuation routes, and we want to just have a standardized approach to that as well. The next item has to do with vegetation management. There's a couple of images there of some machinery and some goats. We really want to reduce the combustible vegetation and protect our communities and the critical infrastructure, especially along those primary and secondary evacuation routes. This would be done through a combination of crews, or equipment, or grazing, or being able to put fire back onto the ground in some cases, using environmentally sound practices. This is an example of coordinated prevention efforts that are done between two communities. So in the center, you have Sleepy Hollow, and the yellow areas indicate areas that had treatment done. So dead and down brush was removed, trees were limbed up, shaded, it's called a shaded fuel break. It looks much more park-like after it's completed. And you can see the work that's done in one area, and then just over the hill there on your top right-hand corner is San Rafael. And so these shaded fuel breaks act as speed bumps, if you will, to slow a fire as it moves from one area to another. So by coordinating the efforts on what's done on one side of the ridge to the other, you can have an additive effect of protecting both communities. This work is very expensive. This project represents about 600 acres that were cleared. It's about $1,000 an acre in this method. It's much more costly when you get into heavy equipment and clearing along vegetation routes, so you'll hear it a little bit more later. Education is such a key component to this. You know, the fear that people have is very, very high, or their understanding of what to do is very, very low, and we need to bridge that gap with very good information. There are presentations, I believe there's been at least one or more in Largesboro and Cordermadera areas. Living with Fire, it's a two-hour presentation. There's a magazine as a resource guide that goes along with that. But we really need to get at much larger groups so that people can understand what they need to do, that they can take concrete steps to help themselves, their neighborhood, and then also the community at large. Firewise Communities is another important aspect, and this is all being done independently now. We want to do this together through Firesafe Marin to get this word spread. So those first four are what make up the core again of the JPA. That's that shared resource. Now, these are areas where can be shared or also can be done independently with an agency. So home evaluations and inspections, not just talking to them about the vegetation that needs to be potentially removed, but talking to them about their structures as well, the combustibility or ignitability. So, you know, there are still homes out there with wood siding, shake roofs, you know, decks, doors, eaves, vents, that are all vulnerable to fire. And so what these inspectors would do is go around and help write prescriptions for the homeowners to be able to address over time. We are not looking to try and denude people's property, but we want to make sure that we don't have plants in such an arrangement that if they catch fire, we'll carry that fire to the structure, and then we want to be able to harden the structure so that it would resist brands and embers. Along with this is also grants that would be available for seniors and people with low income, and also access and functional needs. This can help incentivize getting the work done, or it could cover work done if people don't have the funds to be able to do that, to help offset this cost. We also want to have a dedicated abatement program so that any kind of follow-up is done, you know, the same across all agencies, so that we don't have one area having, you know, much more restrictive requirements and one having less, but try and make it uniform. The last item has to do with just a local community need. And so, you know, this is things like, for example, in San Rafael where they have admittedly a difficult problem with homelessness. They've got people in large encampments that are built in open space areas right below, you know, subdivisions, and they're getting a lot of ignitions. We also had an ignition just this last week of a homeless camp out in Hamilton. And so this allows funding to be used and a program to be created that can help address that specific need, which is probably not the same concern or as high a concern in other areas. Also, there are places where the road access is very difficult, so a community might decide that they want to use parking boxes or striping that's placed on the ground that helps people understand where they can park and still provide for access and egress. It also would help law enforcement as they go through and identify those people that are blocking evacuation routes, et cetera. So those are a couple of examples of what a local agency could do with those funds. So I'm going to turn this over to Jason now, and he's going to talk about the amount of money that we need to raise in order to fund those projects and the next steps going forward.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, Jason Weber, Ross Valley, and County Fire Chief. Thank you again for having us, and I know Bill quoted, you know, I think tonight there was an example of some of the challenges and frustrations when the resources aren't there to walk someone through their property. And you've got a stellar city manager, I saw him jump up, and I think he went and had a conversation. And the intention is not to frustr-
He beeped up.
Was he, is that what he did? That's that law enforcement background? You know, and I think that you've got a dedicated fire chief, a great fire marshal, but the resources are limited. And, you know, we've talked about the fear level being here in our community, and really the understanding of what needs to be done here, and trying to bridge that gap takes resources to do that. And, you know, I think it is challenging, and I've had to sit and experience the same thing, and very frustrated that we just need the people to go out and be able to tell them it's this, not that. It's not a $25,000 tree removal, it's really limbing and pruning, there's work, it's hardening the home, those kind of things. And I think that, you know, a big part of this gives us the resources to do that. And I don't want to speak for your fire chief, you've got a fabulous one and fire marshal, but, you know, I certainly share the challenges they experience, that you experience as council members tonight. But that's not what I was up here for, so I'll stop and get back on track, because I know you have a lot of business this evening. So Bill mentioned, you know, what it takes. We've got a grant right now working through your community and others in the Ross Valley, $1 million, 55 road miles, it's about $18,000 a road mile. That's to treat vegetation, and we all know that that grows back. But it, I think it highlights the magnitude of this when all of a sudden $20 million doesn't sound like that big a number when you're talking about a countywide effort. A stable source of locally controlled funding, and I think that's the important part here. There's been other initiatives through the state fees, et cetera, the state SRA fee, if you recall that. That money left the county and never came back in most cases, and that was challenging. Supplementing, not supplanting, many of us have put efforts or one-time monies towards these things, but we know that as we have a recession, whatever, it's going to tighten up, those are discretionary, and our core services, we're going to go back to. This allows us to maintain this, which we know this threat is not going away, especially with climate change. Anything on the ballot would require two-thirds majority. I'll talk about the polling that was done to really give us an idea whether we're going to bring this in front of all of you and the other boards and councils. You know, the challenge now is we're grant-dependent, so we're chasing grant dollars, which means we're not strategic, we're not doing what we need to do collectively. A holistic approach is what's needed with this. It's not just a fuel break, it's not just a home hardening, it's a combination of a lot of things, including getting people out alive, early notifications, evacuation routes that are safe enough for them. And then, and then again, I think that talks about the strategic nature. Christie's got that, which she won't let me control, because I'll go too long, so that's a good thing. So Bill mentioned what the areas were, and I won't go in and repeat that, but this gives you an idea of how those funds are anticipated or proposed to be broken up. And I think some of the other things are local control. You know, that's important when you talk about policy. You know your community certainly better than I do, and better than somebody from another part of the county, Nevada, et cetera. And, you know, on watching what occurred in Mill Valley, I think very well-intentioned. I think that also highlights the importance of local control and understanding what you can do in your community and what won't be tolerated and imposed by a JPA. The defensible space evaluations, and again, you hear that's not inspections, it's evaluations. It's really bridging that gap with education, there's an ability to enforce. There's also an abatement program built in that, and I think all of us struggle as agencies when we have a vacant lot and the neighbor screaming, and the process it takes to get them to an abatement, because it's handled through a trust of an attorney in the East Coast, is incredibly frustrating and extremely time-consuming. So having the JPA to manage those is an important piece of this as well. I mentioned the polling results. So this is on the countywide initiative. You know, one of the first things early, we had to do, and this was in the spring, was, you know, we're hearing from the voters as professionals, I'm sure you're hearing as elected officials, we need to do more. And I think that we say, we understand that, but it takes resources to do more. Is there a willingness from the community for a modest charge to do that? And that was really the question we had to ask countywide, and the results are in front of you. So working with the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers on a more progressive approach, which was a square footage assessment, was proposed as a concept from that group, a flat parcel tax, and then a quarter cent sales tax, which was a recommendation from the grand jury. You can see where the two-thirds majority line is on the graph. The up to 11 cents per square foot was the highest countywide. In the Ross Valley specifically, that was 80%, so much larger, and I think that has to do with home sizes, people were paying attention. $178 a flat parcel did better on the south side of the county than, and didn't even hit a 60% threshold on the north side. And then the quarter cent sales tax was not of interest almost across the board. So some of the fiscal accountability pieces, the funds must stay local and can't be taken by the state. They must be used for wildfire prevention mitigation, independent oversight, a citizens' oversight committee, annual reporting of financials, annual reporting of audits, and I would add to that through this is an annual work plan, as well as a review of the work plan to see what was accomplished. So, you know, setting solid metrics for us to meet, and then being able to look back at ourselves and say, did we meet those, and what were the reasons we did or didn't as we move forward. I talked about the independent citizen oversight, exemptions for low-income seniors, and really capitalize on this as an opportunity for us on a larger level to go attract federal and state grants and bring that money back. This is not to stop that, it's to enhance it. It's to have a person that can be aggressive in the pursuit of state and federal grants at a regional level, which is usually looked upon favorably by the state and federal agencies, and also having the ability to either provide matching funds or shovel-ready projects so we can get that money ahead of everybody else. And a lot of times, we miss out on those because we don't have either one of the two. Also, the building in some engineering so we don't end up with a bloated JPA. I think we have some really, really good JPAs to follow as examples. One of them is your fire agency, another is the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, have to throw that out there. But I think, you know, those agencies are very successful JPAs, and I think modeling a lot of that behavior and the governance and the structure will make this successful. We put a 10% cap on administrative overhead, not on the whole number, but on the core. So that's a much smaller number than the whole. And the intention there is, again, not to, not to end up with something exploded. This slide looks very different for those that have seen other slides, because again, this is an evolving process as we go and meet with boards and councils. One of the things we heard from a lot of the agencies was, we didn't like the concept of not having somebody there on the board to hear these things and have a voice for our community. And the original structure was a little different. What we've put together, working with the city managers group, the fire chiefs, the work group, is the concept of a 19-member board, but building in a, I'll call it the Senate and the House into the vote. So a population threshold as well as a 50% majority threshold. So what that does is that really forces everybody to come together and work and solve things collectively, but wouldn't allow a small agency like Stinson Beach or Bellinas to overpower the town of Cordermadera. That was kind of the concept behind that. And I think everybody is very interested in this and concerned and wants to participate. The operations group would be comprised of agency staff. So again, the top group, all elected officials, you all set policy, not me as a fire chief or your local fire chief. And so that group's all elected officials from each one of the member agencies. The operations group would be appointed officials, like your city manager, your fire chief, to represent your interests and get deeper into the weeds, if you will, with the development and ultimately recommendation of a budget, a work plan, and the review of the overall operations. The last group here is the advisory committee, and this group consists of your land management agencies, a member, a subject matter expert from each of the 19 member agencies. This is where you can get down into the work groups, and really rubber meets the road. We've divided the county up into five geographical areas for a couple reasons. One is trying to prioritize everything countywide would be difficult. It takes us to prioritizing locally, so amongst the Ross Valley agencies, working together on projects that have mutual benefit. This is also where I bring PGE in. If PGE's doing a large project, vegetation management along a street because of power lines, let's capitalize on that work they're doing, even use their own contractor if it's a little bit extra rather than doing all of our own work, you know, a year later. Christie's moving me along, that's a hint. We can answer any questions. So a little bit about what's happening now. We're out doing these presentations to, I think this is like 32, public presentations that are happening. We're taking your feedback, your input, making refinements and changes to the JPA, the structure, answering questions. We've been doing the same thing with non-governmental organizations, and that will transition slowly in the next two weeks to coming back to these 19-member agencies, asking them to consider joining the JPA and ultimately passing a resolution, placing it on a ballot for March of 2020. Ultimately, the Board of Supervisors would take that action in November of the agencies, the 19-member agencies. One of the things that did come in this afternoon, I think, was the piece about the climate and how does this affect climate, and not doing it in a negative way. And the Wildfire and Climate Coalition has been working with us, they've provided feedback and proposed changes in the JPA. We've worked on incorporating those in the most current draft. You know, I think it's important that we do this in an environmentally sensitive way. You know, we don't want to create further climate change, you know, understanding this is a big part of the cause. So there's been a lot happening, but I think that, you know, I really do feel strong that working together, we can do this better than 19 independent agencies struggling to do
Are we going to take public comment? We see, I see we've been joined by at least one supervisor from the county.
Yes, well, I was going to-
Have our questions first.
Let council ask questions, then let the citizens ask questions, and then... David, do you have any questions?
Scott, do you want to come?
All right, not yet.
Okay. Sloan?
I'll ask you a question.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, chiefs, for coming and for your service to our communities. This was an awesome presentation, really helpful, especially the video, I think really helped me understand both the scope of what we're facing and sort of what we're looking at in terms of a potential response. I think you guys sketched out a really compelling idea here for an overarching countywide program to coordinate our response to this pressing threat. And I'm really glad that you guys spoke to, including grants for homeowners to help them with abatement. I think we heard here tonight from the public that that's going to be a critical component of making sure that nobody feels like they're getting run over by this, you know, steamroller of fire preparedness. So I'm glad that that's already being thought about. One question that I did have real quick, you mentioned the sort of case of the, you know, abandoned property in town owned by a trust on the East Coast. It's all very kind of difficult to trace, difficult to get a hold of whoever's in charge of it. If we end up spending some of this taxpayer money to abate that property, is there a potential for a mechanism to recoup that cost? Can we file a lien or something against the property?
So, great question. What we'd be asking, coming back to each member agency, is passing an ordinance that simplified the steps to abatement, and then that would allow for the abatement to occur. This team would handle the mechanics of the abatement, hire the contractor, and then, yes, we did just that, it would have to be leaned for the work done and no additional costs, so no fees, actual cost of the- It would have to be leaned for the work done and no additional costs, so no fees, actual cost of the, the work to be completed.
Great, thank you.
And your council would review that.
Thank you.
You said 19 participating agencies. Who are the 19? I, you know, there's 11 incorporated jurisdictions, there's the county.
So I'll do the best off the top of my head. So you've got the 12 cities and towns, some of which are overlaid by fire districts. Then you've got an unincorporated Marin, you've got fire districts covering some of those exclusively. You've got the county covering others. In some cases, you have a fire department JPA that lays over the top of the cities and towns. So that's the case through a lot of the Ross Valley, Ross Valley Fire and Central Marin Fire. So the, the membership lies with the agency having fire jurisdiction and taxing authority for fire. And that's a legal opinion. So although they come together for fire protection services like a JPA, they would be separate individual members under this proposed concept. So it's, it's all the cities and towns except for Nevada, Tiburon, and South Salida, which are covered by fire districts. Then it would be all of the fire districts and the county. And those, some of those districts are pretty small. They include Inverness Public Utility District, Bolinas, Stinson. Larger ones are on, near these, larger ones are on the east side of the county.
Scott, would be, would we be, one is Central Marin or three is two towns in a fire district?
Both Larkspur and Corder Madera would be passing resolutions to join the JPA. And those are the two agencies that have taxing authorities. So the fire department is a JPA, but cannot institute any taxes. That's why Larkspur and Corder Madera will be separate individual entities in the organization.
Do you think 20 million is enough to get it done? Or is it just?
What we did was we looked at all those programmatic elements and we came up with totals for what we thought we would do to be able to really move the needle to get work done. You know, there would likely be a, an escalator that was built into the, the measure. And you've got to think about this over, you know, a multi-year period. So it's, it's $20 million, yes, per year, but in 10 years, that's $200 million, you know? And it, and it goes up from there. So we think over time we'll be able to get to it.
And who's going to have enforcement on the public landowners? Because some of the biggest scoff laws are cities and towns who haven't kept up.
So speaking to the larger land management agencies or cities and towns that have pockets of, of city-owned spaces or combination of all. So the, I think the intention here is that those are public resources, they have public benefit. Some is our watershed where our water quality and quantity comes from. That, you know, the land management agencies recognize they have to come to the table here, that this can't be to pay for all of those services needed. But we also recognize that, that they abut our communities. And as for city or town open spaces, these funds could be applied to manage those parcels. And I think that becomes a burden on a lot of cities and towns when you're managing priorities. And so this would help with that, and it also reduces the risk in those immediate areas.
I have a question. Scott, sorry, I should have warned you about this beforehand. I know we have big grant money right now for vegetation management. What is the Central Marin Fire Authority ongoing budget for vegetation management and removal approximately?
The authority itself does not have a budget for that.
Thank you. That's, that's all I needed. Thank you.
How much have we?
We have Ruben. We have Ruben.
Secret weapon.
I knew what the answer was, but thanks.
So, thank you. Probably Chief Weber, I think. Thank you all around. What specifically is the next action? It's not an action item for us here tonight, but what would you like Corder Madera to do next?
So I think that the key is participation and that.
But what do you mean by that specifically?
So participation would be joining the JPA and asking to put this in front of our voters to ultimately let them make a decision as to whether this is a priority. And I think that's, that's one of the big things here is that we're hearing from our constituents, your constituents, that they want us to do more. We've put as fire professionals, city managers, the best plan we feel forward that is the most cost effective to meet the demands. And now I think we'd be asking you to put in front of the voters to say, this is what we've come up with. Are you comfortable with that?
So the, the next step is you'll give, maybe our town attorney has seen the draft JPA or something, I don't know. And then after that, we, we take a vote to put it on the ballot? Is that what happens after that?
We'll be coming back to you in the first meeting of October with a sample resolution to consider, which would be the town electing to join the JPA and to request the county to put the ballot measure on the ballot.
Okay, thank you.
In March.
And by the way, just for the record, it is my own observation that the two fire-related JPAs that I sit on behalf of the town on, the Ross Valley Paramedics Association and also the, our, you know, joint Larkspur-Corder Madera, both are efficiently run and help save lives. So, good job, guys.
Any more questions? One thing I'd like to point out is, at least in our town, I believe like 17% of the population is, what, over 65? Or is it over 75?
No. Not that high.
If you look at the demographics.
But either way, points.
Basically, we, we have an aging population. And I know with our brush clearing efforts, a lot of people are unable to clear their own lots. Either physically they aren't up to it or financially they can't hire somebody to do it. And, you know, we've been, you know, working on what I call a, you know, voluntary mitigation, which is if somebody comes and says, you know, I want to clear my lot, but I don't know how. We've been working with them. And I would strongly encourage other jurisdictions to look into doing comparable work, so.
And I think one of the keys here is your council will have 20% of those funds to accelerate local issues. And this is exactly why, is that if you need to accelerate grants for seniors that are physically or financially can't complete the work, this would allow you to take those actions. If you have a specific project that should be accelerated or prioritized, that can be used for that.
Anyone else?
Public comment?
Public comment?
Hello, Mayor and City Councilman. I'm Meg McCabe, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Marin Wildfire and Climate Coalition that Jason mentioned. And we are members of the climate and environmental organizations who support the JPA initiative. We've been working closely, as he mentioned, with the fire professionals and have felt, felt very encouraged and supported to participate. So thank you for that. Our primary goal is to broaden the scope and appeal of the initiative for all those concerned about climate change and the quality of Marin's environment. First and foremost, we applaud the wildfire prevention authority's mission to build a resilient community and reduce the threat of wildfire to our lives, homes, and infrastructure. The countywide effort and resources sought are appropriate to the urgency and escalation of the dangers that we face. As the initiative is further refined, we urge the authority and all Marin communities to consider the impact that climate change has on the conditions that intensify wildfires and prolong the duration of the wildfire seasons. This initiative is a real opportunity for full community participation in reducing the threat of wildfire and carbon emissions that exacerbate this threat. To that end, we have submitted a list of amendments to the draft, to the draft proposal. And we support the strategies within the proposed initial initiatives frame while implementing them in ways that reduce wildfire threat long-term. Specifically, we ask for vegetation management using environmentally sound practices that minimize the release of greenhouse gases and protect the biodiversity and resiliency of Marin's landscape, and compost vegetation for safe carbon sequestration. Secondly, public education efforts to promote fire-resistant homes, defensible space, and household commission, carbon emission reduction to mitigate future fires. Replacing highly flammable, non-native plants with, with resistant varieties. And fourth, grants to support seniors, persons, and disabilities and low-income homeowners who need assistance maintaining defensible space and hardening their homes. Finally, we recommend the formation of a home and landscape advisory committee that includes representatives from the climate and environmental communities. The residents of Marin are a tremendous resource. We are ready to pitch in and help. Thank you very much for listening to my suggestions.
Patty Stoliar, Disaster Preparedness Committee, CERT, Get Ready, all of those things. And Age Friendly Corder Madera, three quick questions. Does Sonoma County have such a thing in light of what, what happened there? Or are there other regional JPAs that we could model after and maybe not have to reinvent the wheel? Is it possible to use non-professional firefighters for these evaluations since they're not inspections? I've always thought we underutilize people like CERT and the NRGs. And for grants for seniors and disabled, what about people in multifamily units?
Bob Bundy, Golden Hind Passage. As a former Corder Madera representative for the JPA, for the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, I would agree with Sloan that it, these are efficient organizations. I wouldn't necessarily agree they're cost effective. We have a problem with over-governance in Marin. And I've heard Chief Weber talk before that while we've got 19 fire districts or, or fire agencies that we're dealing with, that's actually down from, I think, 36 was the number that he gave before, which is a good thing. In other words, there's some consolidation that's gone on. There's cost effectiveness that really goes with that, is much more efficient. And one of the problems that Chief Tyler and Chief Weber pointed out was that we don't have a central agency. We've got these 19 different agencies. They're all scrambling for grants and things like that. So rather than create another JPA for wildfire mitigation and prevention and go for a parcel tax, I'd remind everybody that Corder Madera just voted to eliminate the parcel tax that we had for the flood board and passed a sales tax for disaster preparedness, flood protection, and secure funding for a lot of the other things that Corder Madera needs. I would advocate that what we really need to look at is further consolidation of the fire services. And I've long advocated for a Ross Valley paramedic, a Ross Valley Fire Authority that was located within the Ross Valley. It being as Chief Weber is over half of the Ross Valley as the fire chief for Ross Valley Fire as well as county fire, I could also make the case that we should potentially consolidate with the county and have a Ross Valley County Fire Service. And in the long run, maybe we only need one fire department in Marin County. Or maybe at the most, San Rafael, Nevada, and everybody else. So I think we would be further ahead of the game by really trying to consolidate the fire services so that there's an overall picture of what we're doing, greater ability to go for grants, greater ability to cost effectively manage our paramedic services as well as procurement of equipment for the fire agencies. I think that's the direction we really should be going on. I support all of the goals, and obviously Corder Madera is doing a good job as we heard from residents of 160 Summit that Ruben is really looked at their property and made some recommendations. Thank you.
Jim Robinson, Ash Avenue, Corder Madera. I concur with most of what Dr. Bundy has said, so I won't repeat those comments. But I would say that I appreciative of the efforts of the, our own fire department, Central Marin Fire and the fire districts throughout the county and sort of the level of attention this has received. It's been sort of a wake-up call for the Robinsons. We've been busily clearing our, north side of our property and the south side of our property. Now up to 10 feet of all the vegetation removed. Unfortunately, we have a wood shake, not a wood shake, we have wood shake on the side of our house. I got a bid for $34,000 to remove that, so that may be a project in the future. But as a senior and over 70, I think that regardless of our age, regardless of our income, we have a responsibility to maintain our properties. I hate to think that Dr. Bundy is going to have to subsidize any mitigating factors that may exist on my property. I think it's my responsibility as a, as a personal property owner to take care of that. And I think that most of us who have a home, regardless of what the financial situation is relative to home, we have resources to, to make those improvements and make our city fire safe. I do have a concern about a joint powers authority. You can look at any county throughout the state of California, and there are many agencies where even some of the elected officials are not aware of the joint powers that exist and what they do and so forth. And I hope that if we do create one, I hope that we don't lose sight. And I would hope that each agency would have an employee that would be a liaison to this agency and also make an effort to take a look at those fire needs within our own community. I live on a hillside. I'm not within a fire hazard area, but I do live in an area that's right across the street from the fire hazard area. And I know that fires don't pay attention to maps and lines on maps, so we are concerned about that. It's always been my concern in the 20 years I've lived here that fire hazards, probably the greatest hazard. I had greater concerns over above earthquakes and even floods within the town of Corder Madera. So I take that seriously. I am concerned that, I've watched Mill Valley's efforts and I've noticed that after their efforts, they went to a voluntary program. And if any of you have been aware or been involved in mitigation of a variety of things where the code enforcement's required, a voluntary effort's not always a successful one. So I would hope that if an organization like this is created, has the ability and the authority and the teeth to ensure that those of us who have hazards, that they get removed and they get removed in a timely manner to, to make Corder Madera and all of Marin safe. With respect to a parcel tax, I didn't quite hear if that was going to be, what, the number of years of that parcel tax and if there was going to be a cost of living inflator in that parcel tax. That's one of the things that always concerned me about school districts that have arbitrarily adopted a 5% costly increase. If you look at the last 20 years in, in the Bay Area, we've only had one year where we actually had a 5% increase in the CPI. It's usually generally around 3% or 4%. So I would take a look at that and see what really is realistic and what's really necessary. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like any of those questions?
If you could, what, as I recall from the chart, it was what, 11 cents, something or other? Or is it square foot of a building? What happens if you own an empty lot?
So, great questions. So the, the proposal now is 10 cents. It was up to 11. We've, are in the process of finalizing the tax study, which refined things on a smaller level. With, it's, yeah, it's, it's on the built structure, not the parcel itself. So for vacant lots, and Christie can help me here, I think, or Scott or Phil, where less than a quarter acre is $25, a quarter to a half acre is $100, and then a greater than a half acre would be $150 assessment on an empty parcel lot. And then multifamily units, so greater than three units in a building, would be $75 per unit rather than a square footage piece. And that has to do with data available on a lot of those parcels. So that, that is the way that, that plays out. Does Sonoma County or other counties have something similar? No, but we have a lot of counties watching us right now that are very interested in similar things. Napa County's asked us to share this entire package with them as they're struggling with the same thing. Sonoma County was looking at a half cent. trying to bring those together and add staffing, so it's not exactly the same. And other counties are struggling on the fire prevention side, frankly, in this arena. Non-professional firefighters for evaluations, that is proposed in the concept. So as an agency, you could use your local fire prevention exclusively, or you can use the JPA pool, which would be a seasonal workforce, doing those inspections. So that is your agency's choice. Multi-unit family or grants. Again, the grants, that would be specified by the board, which you have representation on, and then you have your local funds that you could, you have determination as to how you want to handle that. Too many agencies, further consolidation. I don't think the fire agencies or fire chiefs here would disagree that we would like to see that. As you know, going through the consolidation, you have the challenges that can exist. And Dr. Bundy was spot-on, he has a good memory. 36 agencies were down to, it's really about 12 fire agencies. Some of those are already combined under a JPA. And then, number of years. So it was polled, the polling, this kind of talks about strategy and the problem. The polling we looked at asked questions, eight, 12, 18 years, or until repealed by voters. Eight, 12, and 18 years dropped the polling results down, in some cases below 60% across the board, and as high as 63%, which wouldn't reach the threshold. So we had to have a very long and deep conversation about what was asked, and that's the piece. So right now, the focus has been until repealed by voters. And then as for the CPI, the concept we're looking at, I think, is a very conservative CPI. So a Bay Area CPI, which has ranged in the 2 to, I think 3.9 was the highest, but put a cap on it at 3%. So to control that concept, I was mentioning about having some large 4% or 5% escalator built into the system.
Can I comment?
Yes, please. I would especially like us to, first of all, I want to echo the thanks. This is really fantastic, the work that all of you are doing. It's really fantastic, and I think we're headed in the right direction. I want to make sure that you understand that some of us are in that same camp with the Marin Wildfire and Climate Coalition. There's a number of different nonprofits, and I would hope, for example, that we don't just say vegetation removal, but vegetation management, which means removal and replacement. We need green, we need the production of oxygen and the reduction of carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. And there are absolutely great plants. I know that our fire marshal has been advising people on this very specifically, but we saw earlier tonight that there's some people just say, "Oh, you want me to be bare and baking in the sun." It's not the case. And Ms. McCabe's presentation, I think, is spot-on, and there's a lot of useful stuff. I hope that you all agree that it's useful stuff and useful additions, and we'll work in as you go. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just briefly, very briefly, because we're running late. I'm the towns representative on this group, I've been working on this for months, and I just wanted to thank you for coming. But more importantly, one of the things you see in the paper every once in a while about this is, why don't the fire departments just do this? And I want to make sure everyone understands, our fire departments are set up to put out fires and save people's lives. They are not set up for vegetation management or what we are asking in this particular proposal. So I'm really hoping that we can get behind this and support this, because this is something, I think, that is really necessary and really needed. I have some personal experience, I actually have clients selling a house right now on Montecito, right off Menke Park, and they have been turned down by six fire insurance companies. And we are going to solve it, we're going to fix it. But this is real, and this is local, and it's happening right now, and we need to get on this and solve it. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Okay. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group together items which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, staff, or the public may request removal of an item for discussion, and we will then discuss that separately. Anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, staff would like to request removal of item 4E for a brief discussion.
Okay. Do you want to have that discussion first, or do we want to, you want a motion to pass the others? Up to you. Okay, yep.
Okay. For item 4E, I thought it would be appropriate, given the light of our presentation and the importance of the local hazard mitigation plan, that we invite Chris Good, our newest member of our engineering team. He's a licensed professional engineer in the state of California, and he prepared the staff report, and I asked him to give a one-to-two-minute bullet point presentation on the local hazard mitigation plan. So Mr., pardon me?
Want me to open the staff report?
No, it's fine. Chris has it. Go ahead, Chris.
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, thanks for having me. I'll just give you a brief summary for the 2018 Marin County multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan. So a little background, FEMA has required state and local governments to have a hazard mitigation plan, which is mandated by the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. The previous mitigation plan was approved for five years in 2013, and so the new one was updated for 2018. All 11 of Marin towns and cities participated in the plan's update, along with the North Marin Water District and the Marin County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. The multi-jurisdictional partnership was formed to pool resources and create a uniform hazard mitigation strategy. Appendix I of the plan focuses on the town of Corredamadera's vulnerabilities to natural disasters and current and potential hazard mitigation projects and programs. A few example mitigation activities, where the town participates in decisions on the Marin Emergency Radio Authority and the planned upgrade of the entire system. Town employees are offered emergency operations center training for their duties as disaster service workers. The town now requires vegetation management plans for development in the wildland urban interface areas, as we heard about. This reduces the chance of a wildfire igniting the structures or wildland ignition from a structure fire. The town has also been removing exotic, invasive, and hazardous species and replacing with native, safer vegetation. Earthquake, natural gas valves are required for new construction or substantial remodels, and the town will implement projects identified on the capital improvement plan, such as maintaining and upgrading flood control facilities. The new plan has been approved by FEMA and adopted by nine of the 11 towns and cities of Marin, and the public works staff support adopting the 2018 plan. The full plan can be found on the town website. If you have any questions, I can help answer.
Questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, move the passage of items 4A through 4H.
Can you check with the consent account?
Oh. You can't. Now, handle 4E first. Okay. 4E, public comments. I'm sorry, I lost track. So there's no public comment, so we can take a motion or discussion? Yep. I would move that we approve item 4E.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Another motion?
I would move that we approve item 4A through 4D and 4F through 4H.
Second.
All right.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes, except abstain as to 4H.
Noted. Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is approval of the unaudited actual general fund revenue and expenditure report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, this report was drafted by Daria Carrillo, our finance director, and I am going to give the reports for you. The recommended action states to approve the report, I'm just asking you to accept it at this point. But I want to start the first of three conversations for you moving forward over the next two meetings, and it's all good news, but there are some important decisions for the council to make. And so I wanted to provide a little bit of background and ask the council to confirm that staff is on the right direction, or if there's anything else you want us to consider when we come back to you with future agenda items over the next month. The good news is, for this last fiscal year, for 1819, our general fund revenue exceeded expenditures by $3,028,000. Our revenues exceeded all of our expectations. We received the highest sales tax revenue in the history of the town of Corredamadera this past year. A lot of it had to do with the sales of autos. But again, across all revenue streams, as you'll see in this attachment, exceeded our expectations.
How many of those were electric autos?
Absolutely, absolutely. A lot of them were, actually. So that's the good news, it's all good news. Right now, in our general fund, we have $6.5 million that have been carried over into this current fiscal year. This current fiscal year, we're anticipating, within the budget you approved, about $400,000. We believe it's going to be closer to $600,000 this coming year. So all good news on revenues. We closed our budget about $450,000 under our expended expenditures, so we also came in under budget on top of it, so it was a good year for us. A lot of that had to do on the public work side and some of our other directors. Peter did a good job managing the maintenance side as we continue to evaluate staffing, full-time employees to part-time employees, to contract employees. That was a big reason for, you know, staying within and under budget. So thank you, Peter, for that. So the question for council, probably the second meeting in October, is really, what do we want to do with approximately $2.7 to $3 million of this? $2 million of it will be the 10% reserve that we have, that's approved by council, and the remaining monies will be available for us to decide what we want to do with it. And so I want to really put on your radar a couple of things that staff has been working on through the finance committee. We've done a 10-year projection of our finances, revenues to expenditures, and what we've done is we've built the two trust funds, and they really act as secondary reserve funds for us as we move forward. We put approximately $980,000 annually into the pension trust right now. And so the first consideration for council, again, two meetings from now, you don't have to decide today, but I want to put it on your radar, is to, should we put some of these surplus revenues into that fund now? And I'll show you what that means for us in a second. Also on our radar is the facility, the town hall facility. And so two meetings from now, we're going to give you a financial, some financial options of how we may fund such a facility. Right now, we're planning on funding $4 million of that project through the sales tax revenue over a two-year period. Potentially, we could use $1 million of the surplus towards that and then finance the rest. We could finance it through a variety of options. Councilmember Kuhnhardt, throughout, there's some options with the state. There's also options through bonding and also borrowing money. So there's a series of options. We're going to actually have a third party, Craig Hill, a third-party financial expert come in and give council kind of a lay of the land of our options for consideration. And if you think about financing, we're looking at possibly a 15-year finance, about $350,000 annually in debt payment. What that would do, that would allow us not to fund the facility at the expense of other projects. We could actually manage it over a 15-year period. We could also pay it off at any point. And so, again, a lot of information, but we're going to try to do it piece by piece over the next couple of meetings. The other, the other big-picture thing for us that we've been trying to fund is our unfunded liability as it relates to retiree health. Right now, our unfunded liability for retiree health is about $9 million. With the consolidation of fire and some of the reforms that we made, that is going to lower by $2 million to $7.3. So when you see the Gatsby '75 report that's coming our way, it'll take a snapshot of June of 2018, and it'll show a $9.3 million number. But as of June of 2019, after the consolidation, that number's actually $7.3 million. If you look at our trust fund, we're currently funding, I think there's $2.4 million in it, we're funding a quarter million dollars annually. By the year 2028, so right, right here, close to my retirement, our fund is anticipated to have $7.4 million. We'll have fully funded our projected unfunded liability for retiree health. So that's the first important piece. And so staff now is focusing on financing options and evaluating surplus money to go towards a portion of it, towards maybe the facility for council consideration, and then the other portion, $1 to $2 million towards the pension trust. So I want to show you now, if you go to...
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you for one second? Did you just say that 2028, our unfunded liability may be down to zero?
For the retiree health fund, yes. We'll be fully funded.
That's good work.
And that's the, and I do want to point out, and I'm remiss, but everything, one of the best things we ever did was forming our finance committee. And so Annette DeSano, Larry Reed, Carl Spursum, our mayor and staff are on that finance committee, and it's just been a great group. And so with their help, we were able to do some 10-year projections, and really, what we're trying to do is take between now and 2030 and solve the problem or position our future leaders on the council and staff to really, you know, to take the next evolution of decision-making. It's our legacy, and I'm just, it's something I think we all should be proud of. And so that's the first important piece. The second one is to have a facility for our town. That project could be upwards, the most it could possibly cost us, and you know, we talked about those option two and option three. Option three, the one that really solves all of our problems, is about $10 million. And so if you think about that, we have $4 million that we're going to use from the sales tax. If we use some of the surplus monies, and then we borrow the rest, four to five million, a 15-year loan for $350 annually in debt payment, those are the types of things we're going to start to ask you to consider and talk about. Here now, the big one, the pension. The pension one's the big one for us. And so I want to, I want to just show you again, remind you, it's a, if you go to attachment three of your staff report, it's the second to last page, I believe. This is the, this is our pension trust estimate as of 9/11 of 2019. It's this one right here. It ends at the bottom, it's $11,482,000 in 2028, right? So we're looking at 2028. So if you look at this, we currently have $1.4 million in it. Again, that's with interest of $70,000 and a contribution of 956. It's based on a 5% annual rate of return. And so you can just go down the line, you'll notice that the contributions ebb and flow. They ebb and flow from 900, they go all the way to 600,000, and they move back and forth. That is our reserve, so we anticipate, obviously, we've built, as you see, a $3 million, a $2 to $3 million surplus into our budget, but we also know the worst deficit that we ever, we ever had, again, was in 20, in the late 2000s. And so it was 2.5 million over five years. Sales tax just, Councilmember Ravazia, you remember that? And so it was a hard one. So what we did is we built a number of redundancies into the system, and one of them is this. And so if our surplus just melted away, which it could happen, sales tax ebbs and flows, what we have here is, we would do, we would control it by the contributions into the trust fund. So when you look at the 10-year projection between now and 2028, you can see that we already anticipate those ebbs and flows within the economy. If you look at that, by 2028, we anticipate about $11.5 million in that fund. If you go to the fourth attachment, you'll see, you'll see what putting in, as an example, if you put $2 million of the $3 million surplus this fiscal year into that pension trust, you can see what it does. It jumps from $11.5, it jumps up $3 million in 2028 to $14.5 million. So now, let's take this piece, and let's say we do the $2 million. Now let's go over here to GovInvest, our software, and let's talk about what our unfunded liability is. And so if you look at, let's go, it's right here. If you look at 2019, so right now, you have CalPERS believes that the discount rate is 7%. What they did is they go, "You're going to pay off the..." What they did is they go, you're going to pay off the unfunded liability in 30 years. We're in the third year of that mortgage, right? The 30-year mortgage at a 7% rate. It's right here, it's $18 million, right? That's our unfunded liability. This blue number here, that's what we have in assets. The town of Corder Madera has $52 million in assets in the CalPERS fund. We have $18 million in unfunded liability. We need to have 71 million. That's what we need, right? So, that's, these two numbers combined equals 71. So, we had Bartell and Associates do an analysis for us, right? Last year, when we built the pension trust, and we said, what should that discount rate be? Should it be seven? Should it be four? What is it? And they recommended 6.2. They said CalPERS is going to land at 6.2% in the next 10. So, what your staff did and your finance committee did is, starting next year, we said, okay, we need to assume a 6.2% discount rate. And that's why you see this jump here. See where it jumps up? So, when you see all the unfunded liability numbers come out in the snapshot, they're going back to 2018. Well, we're to the minute in our evaluation of what that dollar is. And so, the media calls and says, hey, your unfunded liability is 18 million? Well, really, no, it's 24. That's our number, right? And so, let's just be honest about it, and that's the number. Okay. So, what we did now is we overlaid what we paid to CalPERS, what our employees paid to CalPERS, what our unfunded liability is to CalPERS, and then we took our pension trust and we overlaid it in this report. So, this report shows everything that the town of Corder Madera is doing, this $14 million pension trust and what we're paying the town of Corder Madera. Keep in mind, when I'm about to do this for you, CalPERS says, hey, you're going to be fully funded in 27 years. Well, they're already a percentage point off in that estimate. What I'm here to tell you is that if we continue on our current track with our current projections, the town of Corder Madera in 2031 is fully funded. You'll have actually a surplus of $2.3 million in that fund. Okay? And we know, this is a starting point for us. We're not sitting here to pat ourselves on the back and say we solved the problem. But the importance is, funding this pension trust, as you get to a certain amount, the interest that you start to accrue, and it starts to position us to really attack this thing between now and 2028. It positions our future leaders to make decisions that aren't so, you know, you have two options. They have multiple ones. Keep in mind, in 2031, they'll be positioned then to not put $600,000, a million dollars annually into the trust. They can now move it to something else in the general fund. We just set up the future leaders for decisions. So, I think this one, and our police, I'm sorry, police facility, our town hall facility are the two major things that we need to really focus on solving for our future leaders and our town. That's our legacy. So, I recommend the surplus now, and the next month, when we come back to you, and all future surpluses are evaluated on these two points. And that's really where your staff is focusing on. But I wanted to give you a visual, because we talk a lot about it verbally. This thing is nice now, because this is at the rate that I told you about. This is at a 2% CPI increases for staff. The other thing is, it currently includes the FIRE authority. So, our contributions to the FIRE authority are included in these numbers. What is not included in these numbers is the police authority. And I know the council members that are on that have talked about it, to follow the same strategy. I think this is cutting-edge. I think we're the leaders in the state on this. And so, I wanted to give you a visual. Again, if I'm off-base, or if there's anything else you want staff to consider between now and the next 30 days, this is the time, because we're, again, we're going to make some big-picture decisions in the next 30 days as a council.
Are you able, live, to show the results of putting a million dollars of surplus in, say, at the end of this year?
Yeah, so this is currently at $2 million.
Oh, you've added that in already?
This is in now. So, if you look at, let's say, we'll compare it to 2031. So, in 2031, at a $2 million additional surplus, we'll have $2 million in 2031. So, if you... What would you want to put in? A council member, you want to put in $1 million or nothing?
Uh, one.
Oh, yeah, I need one.
I'm just curious if you could do that. And I assume that the date of going into the green stretches out a little bit, but not much.
You can see it lowers it, basically, $2 million, about $1.9 million less over that period of time. And if you were to, just one last piece, if you were to just do zero, you would have about a $3 million swing the other way. So, every dollar at this point really counts when you get into costing, one thing that might help, too. Look here, so right now, our projection right here, this is where we are now, 2019, 2020, you can see it. See this huge spike? Those are big numbers. That's a million-dollar number. And so, my recommendation for us for consideration is, when we do have the money, our biggest obligation, I think, as a town, is to make sure that we take advantage of the pensions when we can. And this is a moment in time that we do, because it's only going to get more difficult down the road. So, anyway, I just wanted to give you a picture. It's not really about pensions, but it is about opportunities for us. I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, if there's anything else you want me to consider...
What would happen if you were to do the discount rate at, say, 4.5%?
You're going to make me...
Four, you know?
So, 4.5. So, that's the number. So, if it was 4.5% between now and 2031, you would have a 19... Actually, if you put the $2 million into it, your unfunded liability in 2031 would be $15 million.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Questions? Who else?
So, all I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, after a public comment, is just to accept the report. And again, if there's anything else that is shocking to you that you want me to consider, I'm happy to do that moving forward.
Okay. Any public comments or questions? So, there's no action to take, so I guess we go on to the next item.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
As the council member who was on the council in 2010, when the grand jury released the report saying the town was probably going to go bankrupt, thank you. Exceptional work. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Also, thank you and Sloan and the other council members who did the initial sales tax override to get our head above water and now going forward. So, you're welcome. Any other comments? Questions? Okay. Item 6B, authorize the public works director to approve project plans and contract documents for God knows what.
Mr. Mayor, Peter Brown from the Public Works Department. Aside from knowing now that 2028, I might want to apply for your town manager position if the finances are in good position. The item before you is in relation to the slide repair project for 2019. The rest of what the mayor was finishing was authorization to advertise for bids, as well as award a construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder in an amount not to exceed $550,000. So, briefly, we have three locations where we've had slides. I know the Sausalito slide got a lot of attention during last year's storms. We had two slides at 57 Summit and 150 Edison. If you get a chance, those are both up on Christmas Tree Hill to check out those locations. We've secured them temporarily. We've cordoned them off. We've tried to keep traffic and weight off of those two locations, but they're in need of repair prior to the next winter season. The third location is up on Endeavor Cove, where we have kind of some reoccurring issues. One of the things I like about our engineering team now is we did a good job of combining the three of these, so I think we're going to get a good price if there's a contractor who's willing to bid on them. All three of the locations are defined in the specs, and we like to put this out to bid and get someone. We think it's actually going to cost us closer to $450,000, but we asked you to go up to $550,000 in case the bids come up high. But those are standard slide repairs at the two locations in the residential neighborhood. And at Endeavor Cove, for those of you who are familiar, there's a big portion of that hillside that is town-owned, that is in need of more reinforcement. And a big portion of that investment will actually go towards protecting the homes across the street in the event that more debris come down off of Endeavor Cove. So, I'm happy to take any questions the council has on those items.
These are real. These are real.
You can confirm.
Question. Up on Summit, any chance you could go into the hill far enough to put in more parking pads up there? It's my impression of that street is, there's not much parking in the way there.
Yeah, I don't...
If you had a parking pad, we could use it for a debris box for clearing the street.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I can look back at that 57 Summit location and see what kind of width or opportunity we have up there. I haven't done an assessment at that location for additional parking, but we did do one for Morningside, right around 2:10 Morningside. I was up there last week, and we did some measurements, and we look like we can turn about four spaces into six or seven. So, we are taking the opportunity to enhance parking where we can. But again, we're always looking about site distances and fire engine clearance and whatnot.
Right. There's zero curb at that spot on 57. I mean, it's the falling out is from the road, from under the roadway, so there's no space.
Upstream or downstream of that is, there's potential, but not at that location. You're correct.
I was hoping you were cutting into the hill.
No. It's rebuilding the hill below the wall.
It's more difficult than that.
Okay. Oh, well. All right. Anyone want to make a motion? Make comments? Public comments? All right. Council comments?
I would move that we authorize the public works director to approve the project plans and contract documents, authorization, authorize him to advertise for bids, authorize the director of public works to award a construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder in an amount not to exceed $550,000 for the 2019 slide repair project.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes. Okay. Item 6C, authorize the public works director to issue a request for proposal for installation of 245 light-emitting diode LED retrofits of existing streetlight fixtures in pilot test sites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brief introduction for the folks that have worked on this. I wanted to thank, in particular, Leslie Reagan, who's going to give you a presentation on the program that we're considering. And we also have Allison Miller and Dana Armanino, who are with the county Marin Public Facilities Energy Management Team. And to be honest with you, we couldn't have done this without them. They're here as well for questions. But what I'd like to do is just turn it over to Leslie to kind of walk through the proposal for this pilot program.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of town council. First, Allison, Dana.
Just Dana.
Okay, I wanted to meet you, because I've never met you in person, so thank you for being here. As Peter said, we really couldn't have done this without you, and we really appreciate all the help you've given us. And I know that you are very busy, so thanks for also being here tonight. Okay, so, to move on, the project proposes to replace existing high-pressure sodium, which is HPS, light fixtures with modern light-emitting diode LED technology on all streetlight types. The project does not include replacement or repair of streetlight poles or other associated In 2017, the town of Corder Madera joined other jurisdictions in Marin County in switching to 100% renewable energy via Marin Clean Energy's Deep Green Program. By retrofitting existing streetlight fixtures with LED lights, this will use less natural resources and help offset the cost of effective rate increases by switching to deep green. Similar projects in neighboring jurisdictions have resulted in up to 40% reduction in municipal streetlight energy use upon project completion. So, right now, we are at 0%. And after Phase 1, we will be at 33%. Did you not like that, Peter?
No, we're good. We're just, I'm getting some flack about, why are we only doing a third? But we're about to talk about that, so go ahead.
Yeah, so here we are. Here's why we're doing a third. This project involves two phases. For the first phase, we're going to do a pilot, four pilot areas, which, if you look in your staff report, it's attachment one. So, part of Phase 1 will engage the community in education, outreach, and feedback. Phase 2 will involve retrofitting all remaining streetlights, not retrofitting it in Phase 1. This report addresses only Phase 1. Four different areas were identified by the Planning and Building and Public Works Department for Phase 1. These areas were chosen to maximize exposure of the program to the community while minimizing residential transitions. An initial inventory of these four pilot test sites totaled 245 streetlights. So, Phase 1 would retrofit 245 streetlights. Staff will return to council with RFP results and recommendation to award a project in the coming months. Once complete, pilot results and recommendations will be made on how to proceed with the Phase 2 project, which would include retrofitting the remaining fixtures. Phase 2 would be funded using any unspent balances from the pilot project, along with currently allocated fiscal year 2021 CIP funds. Financial analysis, the Marin Public Facilities Energy Management Team performed a financial analysis for the replacement of 245 fixtures using historical prices paid by Marin jurisdictions, and this includes a 50% cost contingency to allow for variations in pricing for decorative fixtures. This can be seen in Table 2 of your report. The total estimated cost of the project in the pilot area is $146,300, which is less than the $270,000 allocated for the LED conversion project in the council-adopted two-year CIP. Retrofitting 245 fixtures would result in operating cost reduction to the town of approximately $11,200 per year for electricity alone. As you can see, if you include maintenance cost savings and reduced frequency of replacement, estimated annual cost savings are at $13,500. The town plans to solicit bids for retrofitting streetlights in the four identified pilot areas with a total project cost that should be around $146,300 cost estimate. Any remaining balance after community education outreach can be rolled into Phase 2. Okay. Benefits of switching from HPS to LED. We already went over energy savings, reduced maintenance and operation costs, improved light quality that improves visibility, reduction in light pollution, greater reliability and fewer outages, most come with a 10-year warranty, and no disposal hazard. I know that there will be questions about light emitted by HPS versus LED streetlights. And so, here is an image showing what we have currently. And then, the proposed is on the right side, and that's what it would look like with LED So, this gets to color temperature, so LEDs differ from HPS in that they have different color temperatures. And so, staff recommends installing fixtures with a correlated color temperature of 3,000, which is the lowest CCT or correlated color temperature level currently available. The CCT ranges from 1,900 degrees Kelvin, which has an orange hue and is similar to candlelight, to 10,000 Kelvin, which is blue and similar to the sky on a bright, clear day. The American Medical Association recommendation is to minimize blue light, because it can disrupt diurnal cycles. To avoid these concerns, the AMA and the International Dark Sky Association recommend LED lights with a 3,000 CCT. Community engagement. We plan to have a, first, we plan to notify and educate the affected communities, which will include a press release, postcard mailers, which will look similar to this, and a pilot project website. Messages will include information on the benefits of switching to LED, energy savings, cost savings, research around correlated color temperature, human sleep cycles, and how we are following the scientific community's suggestion of 3,000 CCTs. Residents will be invited to complete an online survey and provide feedback. The survey and feedback period will be open for four weeks after completion of the pilot installations. So, special thanks to Allison, Dana. As I already said, they are an integral to this. And now, we're ready for questions, since we have them here with us.
Hi, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, did you want to point to somebody else?
Well, I'm guessing that she's going to be a little bit better at answering questions yet, but let's see.
Either one.
So, if we prove this thing right away, what's the timeline? I was trying to piece together four weeks here and so on and so forth. When can this happen? When can we get the pilot program, like, rolling?
My guess would be that the retrofitting would actually occur in 2020. My guess would be that the retrofitting would actually occur, um, in 2020. Um, I think that putting together the RFP, getting it out, getting an consultant on board, um, so yeah, I would guess early 2020. Uh, it is, we did decide for a two, two-step approach, and, and if you notice the map, it's along our arterials, we're looking at Paradise Drive, uh, San Clemente, Tamalpais. We want the community who live in neighborhoods to get exposed to the LED along our main corridors so that when we go through the rest of the community, they're, they know what to expect.
But realistically, phase one lights should be installed in the first part of 2020?
That's what I would say.
Okay. And then unless people flip out, then phase two would be later in 2020?
Some people will flip out, um, but yeah, we could do phase two, uh, in, in 2020 as well. The one thing I will say is this has happened in a lot of communities, and the almost universally, here's what happens. Folks have a hard time in the first week or two because of the change, um, they complain, some of them, and then they grow accustomed because the lighting is better, the safety is better, um, it's just an adjustment period.
Okay, thank you.
I was given to, uh, understand that, that when the city of Santa Fel started its program, that it utilized a PG&E 0% loan energy savings program to pay for it so that the community kept going, paying essentially the same cost annually until such time as the payoff was achieved, and then the, the savings gets, gets rendered, so that it didn't have to come out of pocket. Is that true, and, and is that something that we could do as well?
I can speak to that one.
Thank you, Dana.
Uh, yes, Santa Fel did utilize on-vill financing program from PG&E. However, uh, that program, the eligibility of streetlights ended at the end of 2018. So we did look into it as a possibility for you all, but, um, streetlights were removed from the eligible list of projects for that, so.
Okay. And can I ask another question, please? Have you all looked at the possibility of, of subbing in with the unused electricity some EV charging on light poles?
Uh, for this specific project, it, it wasn't a recommended measure. It's something that the town could consider. I know LA is doing a pilot project with that right now. There, there are some concerns and considerations that you all would have to think about. It's a, uh, since streetlights are billed on an un-metered basis, they are just a flat rate for what you have installed, so you have a certain rate for a high-pressure sodium fixture. When you switch that to LED, the rate drops. Uh, plugging in a car uses electricity that's not metered, so there could be some tension with PG&E to go that route.
Thank you.
Question. Could we do a phase zero, which is put in a few of the fixtures right outside of Town Hall so we can actually see what it's like?
Yes.
Few weeks.
Yes. Do we already have a few, like on Paradise?
There, there are a couple that have been replaced on Paradise. As I was doing some inventory, I did see that. I believe you had some burnouts and possibly, uh, I believe DC Electric is your maintenance supplier. They work for MG, uh, Marin General Services Authority, and I think they did replace one or two with LEDs when those two burned out. However, there, there are LEDs all around the town. The county replaced almost all of our LED fixtures, so you drive a little bit outside of your town limits and you're going to start to see those LED fixtures. Be aware that what the town installed was 4,000 CCT, so a little bit bluer than what we're recommending that you all consider, because at the time, that was the lowest we could go, so.
Wait, that's what the county did?
Yes. So, so you, you guys will have a little bit, uh, mellower color.
Right, and as someone who has a view of the local school that redid itself and put in LEDs, their lighting is noticeably whiter than what was there in the past, and I'd sort of like to be able to walk out the door and look and actually see what the color will be. So if you could do that.
Do you know if the existing ones on Paradise are 3,000 or 4,000?
I, I don't know. I can't tell from just looking at them what the CCT is.
Any other comments, questions?
This is great. I'm excited.
Public comment, right?
Public.
Yeah, my recollection was that Kelly Crow installed several, uh, advised a number of us to go out and look at them. I thought they were 3,000. I thought I remembered them as 3,000. Uh, and so they've been in place. I don't think there was any real negative feedback. You know, this is something that's universally being done. We're all trying to save electricity, so I think just go with the project and advise people and let them know about it, but I, I don't think we need to get into a lot of the feedback. I mean, if people want to give you feedback, they'll give you feedback, but let's just go for the project. We, we need this.
Bob Bundy for mayor.
Can I, can I just reflect that the, the present president or executive director of the International Dark Skies Association, which was quoted in, in this, was nearby at the birth of our first child, as we were nearby at the birth of his first child in Maryland 34 years ago.
Jim, before we're done with public comment, I'm happy to just make a motion, if you guys really want to talk about this. Can we just, is there more public comment? I'm totally favor this. I move that we authorize the public works director to issue a request for proposal for installation of 245 light emitting diode retrofits of existing streetlight fixtures for pilot test sites identified in attachment number one.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes. Okay. Uh, 6D, authorize public works director to hire.
Dana.
Okay. To hire San Francisco Estuary Institute to prepare technical information supplementing the climate adaption plan for an amount not to exceed 21 grand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one correction, I, I think I chose the wrong language there. I think the proper thing would be to authorize the public works director to enter into a contract. Uh, I tried to be brief, but I don't think I got it, so let's use, for the purposes of this, item in motion, enter into a contract with SFEI, uh, the rest remains the same. Uh, so I hope the staff report was clear. I, I wanted to give you maybe a one or two-minute background on this. Um, so for those of you who haven't looked into it, I, I recommend you look at the Adaptation Atlas, the Bay Area Adaptation Atlas, which SFEI put together. They looked at every single portion of what I'll call watersheds that, uh, abut the San Francisco Bay, and they looked at this method of determining, um, what the vulnerability is of that particular piece of land, uh, what the strategy might be for resilience, and, uh, looking at adaptation along the bay. And they presented to us, so they came and they talked to our, our climate adaptation team and our resilience advisory committee, and I was really impressed with their work. Um, the only issue with that is when you look at every single nine-county bay-fronting, uh, piece of, uh, land, you can't do that fine of a detailed analysis. Um, and I asked them, when they presented to us, would you be interested in refining your analysis for the Cordermadera from, uh, Cordermadera Creek down through San Clemente Creek and along, um, our, our, our bayfront area, and, and maybe giving us a more detailed assessment of what you recommend as independent scientists? They don't live in, in the town of Cordermadera. They don't have any property here. They're not vested like a lot of us are, um, but I wanted their objective opinion as to how we should go about preparing for, um, sea level rise with the primary focus on the marsh restoration. So what I anticipate coming out of this work, um, is some recommendations from them that, uh, if we all like, we can roll those into our adaptation plan. Uh, we're asking for a technical memo for them in a couple of months. Um, they've, they've, uh, they're ready to start this work, uh, right away. Um, and then the last thing I'll put on just at radar for your calendars, on November 12th, uh, which is the second Tuesday in November, uh, we're starting to eyeball a date for potentially having a joint planning commission meeting with the council, um, as well as inviting the flood board, um, and I would like for SFEI to present the results. So this isn't something that we're going to prove, and then a year or two from now, we'll find out what happened. No, I'm asking for a two-month timeline to really crank out their analysis and present to you, uh, their findings, uh, and so, uh, I think the staff report, the rest of it speaks to its, you know, for itself, and I'm happy to take any of your questions on the item.
One of the salient aspects of the SFEI presentation in, uh, the spring, I think it was in March when they did that day, and, uh, Cordermadera participated, was that we should not be looking at jurisdiction by jurisdiction, but at operational land units or OLUs. I hate that phrase. I'd like to see a different acronym, but, uh, and obviously that means us and, and Larkspur because we share pumps, we share the delta of Cordermadera Creek, we share shoreline. To what extent will Larkspur be wrapped into this work?
Uh, well, I didn't ask them to look at, um, jurisdictional boundaries, but if you want to be clear about it, Larkspur, Greenbrier, County Marin, and Cordermadera, um, all affront the bay here.
Right.
So they will be looking at OLUs and not at, at jurisdictional boundaries. So I would say to that extent, um, you know, they're all wrapped in and incorporated in this geographic tie that we have with them. So the recommendations, you know, that's another thing, is the recommendations for how we use nature-based solutions for restoring the marsh, um, those are going to need all kinds of jurisdictional approval from BCDC, uh, Department of Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game, private property owners, uh, the jurisdictions you just mentioned. So yeah, it's going to be a team effort.
Should we be asking, uh, Larkspur and the county to kick some money in, in Greenbrier?
We can. Uh, what I'm proposing in this particular case, maybe after the fact, if they're interested, they can contribute, but because we got the grant and because we're getting these checks back from Caltrans, um, it seemed to me like very worthwhile to expend it on this effort to enhance what we're already doing.
Two questions. Uh, one is, in terms of doing their analysis, are they looking at the underlying soil to tell us, you know, whether, you know, we could build up on it if we had to, or, you know, what our constraints are?
Yeah, um, they're going to focus more on, um, the sea level rise aspects and kind of, you know, where a barrier should be, where marsh restoration should occur, how quickly it should occur, how long we'll get benefit. Say, for example, if we start restoring the marsh, um, in the next year or two, and we do a really good job of it, we could get 50 years of benefit. If we say, you know what, we're not ready to go for the permits or do the EIR, it's too expensive, let's wait and see. If we start it in 10 years, we might get 20 years of benefit instead of 50. So that's the type of analysis they're going to do. Um, in terms of the substrate, I, I do think that we have had one preliminary analysis that's looked at that, and that item came to the flood board at the December 5th meeting last year, and that's on video, if anyone wants to go take a look at it. Uh, but we do, before we adopt, um, you know, any big capital improvements for the climate adaptation plan, we will need to do a detailed soil analysis, because my understanding is that the, uh, the bay mud, uh, that we have here is not behaving, uh, like it is in other parts of the bay.
And the other question is, I like the idea of a joint meeting of, uh, the various committees in town, but, uh, when are we going to brief Larkspur on what we're doing? And do we need to think about a joint meeting with, uh, some of the Larkspur?
In particular, on the climate adaptation plan?
Climate.
Yeah. I, I think a good time for that's going to be the spring, and what I've asked, uh, Larkspur to do is the public works director is on our resilience advisory committee. Um, he doesn't have a lot of time to attend. Um, one or two elected officials that are on the council have come to a couple of our meetings, um, and so we're, we continue to engage with them, but you're right. I mean, ultimately, any of the solutions that we come up with are going to impact them. So, um, so yeah, I, I think if we do a joint meeting with them, it would be Todd working with Mr. Schwartz and kind of coordinating when that might happen. My guess, if you were to ask me, would be spring 2020.
After November would make sense.
Yeah.
One more. There's, um, members of the, uh, the community or the sector of, um, commercial property owners who are very interested in this, and one is represented in the audience tonight, and I was wondering whether we would have any public comment time on this, and I don't know whether that's, uh, intent, but I'm hoping that we can make sure. I, I know you have representatives from our two major malls in, uh, the Adaptation Steering Committee, but there are others, um, right nearby who are also very, very on top of this and interested.
Yeah, we have a set of meetings. I think if the second week of November tees up to be a critical week, as we have our consultants in town and we're doing public outreach, um, you know, certainly folks are welcome to attend those advisory committee meetings. I think you're a member of our resilience advisory committee. Um, you're certainly welcome to bring a guest, um, and then we're also going to have, uh, if this meeting that I'm thinking of for November 12th isn't the only meeting we have that week, if we have another more public-facing one as opposed to SFEI presenting their results to the elected officials, a more interactive one with the public might happen a couple nights later on that Thursday, November 14th.
Cool.
Okay. So, any public comment, questions? Mr. Bundy.
Uh, Bob Bundy, I certainly support this, and, uh, while Larkspur does need to get involved at some point and get on board with this, uh, the, uh, wetlands are really mostly Cordermadera, because Cordermadera's property is, uh, east of the railroad right-of-way, and so, uh, Larkspur may, may only have a small part of the wetlands near Cordermadera Creek, or it may be county, but really the majority of it is Cordermadera.
Anyone want to make a?
Only if you want to.
Moved to authorize public works director to enter into a contract with San Francisco Estuary Institute to prepare technical information supplementing the climate adaptation plan for an amount not to exceed $21,000.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes. Ariel, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I appreciate your time this evening, um, and I appreciate that, um, item 6A was on the agenda before my, uh, my presentation tonight, so, um, I'm here this evening to talk to you about the, uh, the grant that the town of Cordermadera received, um, in 2002, give you a little bit of background on, um, the intention of that grant and where we stand today. So the item is, um, the fact that the, the state of California Parks and Recreation, um, Office of Grant and Local Services, um, did an audit on our, uh, project that we did in 2010, um, and, and the total amount of the grant was $220,000. Um, and after their review and audit, um, they found that we were not in compliance with all the, um, the language from their grant, which, uh, caused us to, um, comply, to need to comply with their request to repay a total amount of $168,521.86. Now, um, to give you some background on that, in 2002, when that grant was rewarded, the initial, um, scope of work, uh, between, uh, the town of Cordermadera Park and Rec Department and the school district was for that money to be, um, identified for a new playground over the San Clemente School Site. Um, and based on the, uh, it's in my staff report, but based on the language, um, that was required by the state of California, um, the town and the school district were not able to reach a mutually revocable agreement, um, largely, uh, due to the school district's plans to redevelop that site, which is now the Cove. Pressing forward, uh, a few years to 2009, when, um, we had just recently completed the patio project, or gone into the patio project, uh, that the beautification committee, uh, spearheaded and, and paid for, um, after that, the, the, uh, Office of Grant and Local Services contacted us, um, about the money that had not been spent and that the, uh, window of time to spend the money was, was closing rather quickly. Um, and during that time, with help from civic organizations, the Lions Club, the Women's Club, um, and several other civic organizations who helped, um, put their, uh, their opinions on designs and different aspects of what would be an improvement to the community center, and we came up with, um, a punch list of recommendations for remodel. At that time, we identified the grant money could be used towards that, um, that project. Um, we moved forward with implementing that plan, made presentations to the commission and council at that time, and came up with, um, really, um, what's turned out to be a really great improvement to the, to the community center, um, but it was, it was largely cosmetic. There was, um, no structural work. It's, um, you are all familiar with what we've done, the floor, the lights, the bath, uh, part of the bathrooms, um, some ADA improvements, um, which has all been well-received, so we appreciate that. Unfortunately, during that audit process, we did fail to comply with the, um, part of the grant that required, um, us to go through a multi-bid phase during that, during that , uh, planning process. Um, so after, and I, and I will say, I really appreciate the help from, from the Office of Grants and Local Services of the state. They were really, um, they tried really hard, and they, they hated to make the, the phone call as much as I hated to call Todd about this, um, and they were really, um, helpful in trying to find, identifying, um, expenses that we had, um, going through our master plan process, old projects, roofing, bathrooms, things that we could look at that were in... look at that were in, within the window of time of the, of the grant period. Unfortunately, we were not able to meet the requirements of the multi-bid process for, for any of those. So at this time, we need to comply with the state of California and repay that amount As I mentioned, the total project ended up being over $220,000 that we did. Be happy to answer any questions about the project or the request from the state.
I have a question. I'm sorry, Mario. It's actually probably for Todd. Have we already budgeted for this?
So that is reflected in the surplus. So we still have it. But it was, we did back out this money in this current budget from, from the park and rec facilities fund.
But this will reduce the surplus we were talking about in 6A by $168,000 or whatever?
It will not. It will not.
It's reflected, meaning it's...
It's reflected. I'm sorry, it is reflected.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And have we put in policies and procedures so that we get multiple bids when we have to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If you may recall, in 2017, this isn't the only project that this has happened, and one of the first things that your Public Works Director did is he put a policy in place with the help of the town attorney, and we trained all staff and department heads. So that was one of the first things we did.
Any additional questions? Public comments, questions?
Bob Bundy, I just wanted to reflect that even though this came fully out of capital funds, there was a lot of bang for the buck because a lot of this was done with volunteer work and pro-dupoda work. Michael Harlock did a lot of the architectural design, and volunteers really helped with a lot of the installation and a lot of the work and painting that was done there. So you got a lot of bang for your buck that you had to spend. It was unfortunate that the state of California doesn't see volunteerism as competing with multi-bid projects.
Can we comment? Bitted out and awarded the bid to volunteers for free?
No, I think, I think that's probably what they were obliged to do.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. So I'll move that we approve...
Can we discuss it first? Sorry.
Yes, sure. Sorry, I thought you was asking for a question. Sorry.
Just going back to Todd's comment there, I'm sorry, and do you mind answering another? I know public comment may be closed, but I'd like to ask Mario a question if I can. So lessons learned have been learned, you think, in some way? Todd talked about there was training given. Is it your sense, is it your own staff, or whoever makes it, who makes the decisions for this kind of stuff?
Yeah, so we weren't all here when this happened. But I can reflect on my...
I'm just on a going-forward basis.
Yes, so this is, so what we've done to make sure, to learn from it, lessons learned to make sure it never happens again, what we've done is we've taken the process, the process of taking a project to bid, knowing all the roles and responsibilities. And so we took that, that process out of the scope of other directors, other departments, and it clearly rests in the hands of the Public Works Director and his staff because they know, they know the procedures. And so as an example, you'll have a capital improvement project list for Park and Rec, and they'll have a wish list of things they want to do. It'll go through the commission, the commission will evaluate it, the commission will give a recommendation, they'll come up with five projects for a fiscal year. Once those projects are done and taken to council and approved, it is immediately turned over to the Public Works team, and they'll execute the process, make sure. But everybody's trained on the policy, so we all know it, me included, but it is overseen and controlled by, by our engineers, our Public Works team.
So that makes perfect sense to me. But back in the early 2000s, each of the departments would do their own bidding or something?
Yeah, I think, and Mario can actually speak to this better than Todd and I can, but I think there was kind of an informal nature to this. And we didn't advertise for bids. You know, there's threshold that the uniform building code says for what you can do above or below $60,000 to $75,000, up to $175,000, and above that, if you don't do a formal bid process, you're breaking state law.
The public contract code.
Yeah. So, so it's, you know, I think that, again, Mario can speak to it, there wasn't as much attention paid to that because the honest truth is, it's very rare that someone is going to challenge you on that. It doesn't happen a lot. But when it does happen, it's not pretty, and in this case, it had to do with an actual grant. So I believe that we have some lesson to learn. If you ask Mario how much he has to deal with me and my department now, then compared to what he did two, three years ago, he'll probably say a lot more. We have two projects right now. I think the basketball court renovation, I think the Public Works team has really helped out with that. We also have the green room remodel that is going through a process as well, and I think my team's been helpful for that. So there's a lot, there's a lot more partnership, and I, we're not going to make this mistake again while I work here.
Yeah, I would like to say, I would like to say that...
They also handled the shade structure over at Park.
Yes. Yeah, I think, I think to Peter's point, I think in terms of how we've established ourselves over the last two and a half years, I think a much stronger sense of team, being able to coordinate with other departments, and there's certainly more, being able to share expertise and understand that, and yes, absolutely learn from that, and will not make this mistake again.
Mario, the other observation I made was that the letter asked that the money be paid by...
Cashier's check.
Cashier's check, and but also, and also by a date that is passed, August, no later than August 31st.
So I coordinated with the state on that, and I told them, we'll give them a check or wire the money, and they told me that you'll give us a cashier's check. And so I asked them why the process, and it's just a really outdated process.
No, but I mean the date, August 31st.
So I told them that we wouldn't give them the funds until the council reviewed it, and so...
And they were fine with that.
They were fine.
So just my own perspective, guys, is that it's a no-brainer. We got to return the money, for Christ's sake. The only thing I wanted to discuss a little bit is a comfort level that we have a, yeah. I'm good with it. I'll second your motion if you've made it. If you haven't, please make it, and I'll second it.
I'll move that we approve repayment of grant funding in the amount of $168,521.86 to the state of California Department of Parks and Recreation.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Councilmember Vazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes. Okay. The almost last thing is the draft agenda for October 1.
We do have, I think we have reports also. We don't have to.
I was going to skip them.
Okay.
We have somebody. One question I have about the next one. When's a noise ordinance showing up?
Yeah, so the noise ordinance will come to us at the, at this upcoming meeting. We had to make some changes to it, and we also want to allow the community at least as much time as possible, 10 days plus, to review the ordinance in advance so we can have some nice feedback about that. You'll also have the Dog Park project will be coming to you at the next meeting. And then at the October 15th meeting, staff met with the Vice Mayor Beckman and Council Member Kuhnhart, and we had some really good discussion that we want to bring to the council to consider on the October 15th meeting, really focusing maybe on some public outreach plan and really maybe forming, forming a committee to challenge and educate our community on sustainability. We think there's some good things there, as well as considering an immediate update to the climate act, the climate action plan. And so bringing in an outside team to help our planning staff with that. And so that'll be coming for consideration on October 15th.
Okay. Good enough. So, is it okay if I adjourn tonight's meeting and we then go into executive session? What?
We will come back after the closed session to report out any reportable action taken. So you're going to just recess into closed session?
I will recess into closed session.